With the Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America. And to the Republic which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Well, thank you for that. And once again, welcome this evening to everyone watching on TV, online, and in person this evening. Tonight's meeting is being broadcast live by Boston City TV on YouTube, as well as Comcast Channel 24, RCN Channel 13, and FiOS Channel 1962. It will be rebroadcast at a later date. If you would like to speak this evening but have not yet signed up, please see our staff person, Ms. Lena Parvex, in the hallway. Sign up for both public comment periods. We'll end promptly at 6:30 PM this evening. We'll begin with the approval of minutes for the October 10th School Committee Meeting. If the meetings are, excuse me, if the minutes are approved as presented, hard copies will be made available immediately in the hallway with the other handouts. If changes are made, you can access the minutes tomorrow on the BPS website. At this time, I'd like to entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the October 10th meeting as presented. Is there a motion? Thank you, Ms. Oliver Davila. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Robinson. Is there any discussion or objection to the motion? Is there any objection to approving the minutes by unanimous consent? Hearing none, the minutes are approved. Before we move on to the interim superintendent's report, I want to take a moment first to acknowledge and to thank Ms. Peril for her message in yesterday's Boston Globe. Ms. Peril, as you've told me many times, you're here for the work and not for the job. That's the essence of public service, as we all know, and we're indebted to you for taking on this circulian task that's keeping this district on track and setting a course for continued improvement in the future. You've been doing great work to build trust with our school leaders and our school communities, to rebuild central office, and to get us off to a fresh start this school year. We move on now tonight to tackle yet another large task in rolling out a plan for tackling decades-old facilities issues and organizational issues across our district, the tough operational decisions that get in the way of our educators' ability to provide for the best outcomes for all of our children and all of our students across this city. We're very fortunate to have you alongside us as our colleague, and I thank you again for your leadership. I'll now present you for her superintendent report, our interim superintendent, Ms. Laura Peril.
Good evening, everyone, and thank you for being here this evening. By now, the community at large is aware of many of the details of the Build BPS Phase II proposal that my team and I will present to the Boston School Committee this evening and kick off a lengthy period of public conversation and engagement that I hope you will all engage in just as we will have a conversation here tonight. When I was appointed to interim superintendent of the Boston Public Schools, I immediately made clear that moving forward with the Build BPS plan was a key priority for the Boston Public Schools, and it has been because that is what I have heard from so many of you as well, from school committee members to school leaders to many in the community. Over the last several weeks and months, the Build BPS team has put together the proposal that you will hear tonight after focusing on the areas of the city with high need for more quality schools but low access for students and families. The proposed multi-year Build BPS plan outlines a framework to expand equity, access to quality, and predictability of school pathways for more students and families by expanding access to quality learning environments for more students, by addressing enrollment challenges to meet student needs, by locating new or expanded buildings in neighborhoods with high student need and low current access, and by creating equitable access to programming for vulnerable student populations, particularly English learners and our students with special needs in special education, and also responding to family demand and best practices to create clearer pathways for students by reducing K-12 transitions, by addressing the decades-long deferred maintenance that has challenged a number of our buildings, and finally, by committing to assessing and improving upon our facility conditions district-wide. We acknowledge that this is a citywide process given the interdependence of all of our schools. The needs of students citywide must be balanced with the aspirations of any individual school, community, or neighborhood. Tonight, you will hear a detailed proposal from the Build BPS team, Chief of Staff Rob Consalvo, Deputy Chief Financial Officer Nate Cooter, and Chief Engagement Officer Monica Roberts. We are presenting tonight the full 10-year arc of the Build BPS Phase II Plan for Community Comment over a number of weeks and months, and quite frankly, over the course of the entire coming year. Given the complicated and phased citywide process, BPS will propose an initial set and specific set of action proposals for school committee approval in December 2018. We will then continue community dialogue to refine the next set of action proposals for future dates, most likely another set of action proposals for school committee consideration in May-June 2019, and then beyond that. Decisions made in one neighborhood or group of schools may have impact on schools citywide. So the Boston Public, excuse me, so the Boston Public Schools will continually monitor for unintended consequences and factor any course corrections into the next set of action proposals along with community feedback. And so because we have so many public speakers tonight and so many important voices to hear, I'm going to bring my superintendent's report to a close so that we can move on to other business and then hear from all of you. And I want to say a particular thanks to the young people who have gathered here tonight to raise their voices, to share their feedback, and I and many here very much look forward to listening to you and continuing to listen to you. So, thank you.
Well, thank you, Ms. Peril. I'll open it up first to members for questions and discussion. All right. Well, I appreciate, and I think I probably speak for my fellow members, that we two echo your comments and want to get to the, listening to all the members in the audience this evening. Before we do move on to public comment, I do want to move first to Ms. Reyes and the, oh, I'm sorry, I need to do a procedural move here. If there's no further discussion, I'll entertain a motion to receive the interim superintendent's report as presented.
A move.
Thank you. Dean Robinson, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Oliver Davila. Is there any discussion or objection to the motion? Any objection to approving the interim superintendent's report by unanimous consent? Hearing none, the report is approved. Now, we can move on, of course, to the student representative, Ms. Evelyn Reyes, and her monthly update from the Boston Student Advisory Committee. Ms. Reyes.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Evelyn Reyes. I'm your student representative, and I just want to share what BSAC's been up to recently. So, the Boston Student Advisory Council had a very productive summer. We had a team of student interns who worked diligently over the course of the break to prepare for this year, as well as make progress on BSAC projects. We had many conversations about our changing nation and the role that young people play in their own changing communities and what that looks like. We, well, one big highlight of the summer was that we had students participate in the Youth Leadership Institute, which was funded by the Nellie May Foundation, and we had a chance to connect with other organizations from around New England and train them on how to conduct listening projects within their own neighborhood, neighborhoods, and we're excited that other groups are taking up this tactic and implementing it in their own work. Within the last couple of weeks, BSAC has kicked off the year with a four-day onboarding and training that included, among various other things, community-building activities, trainings on Listening Works, which is an action and support model from Youth On Board, agenda sensitivity training, and subcommittee review and selection for the upcoming year. Next week, we will be participating in the Dignity in Schools Campaigns, National Week of Action. We'll be conducting our annual listening project next Monday, October 22nd. This year, we have students surveying and listening to other students at Dudley, Ruggles, Roxbury Crossing, and Forest Hills. This past weekend, we participated in the Learning Community Kickoff, which is part of an effort put forward by the organization Cycle that is called the New England Youth Organizing Network, which we are a part of with some other groups. We discussed and shared the process of making a student rights app and had time to bond with the other groups. Closer to home, we are focusing on expanding BSAC membership. Our adult allies, Maria and Abraham, have been working diligently on recruitment. They have made significant progress, wow, excuse me. They have made significant progress this year and are excited to report that we have reps from 21 schools, and we are still working on reaching out to those schools that are missing. And we have communicated with eight of the 12 that are unrepresented and are continuing on working with the four that are left. Thank you.
Well, thank you, Ms. Reyes. I'll now open it up to my fellow members for questions or discussion. Ms. Robinson.
Thank you for your report. Could you give us a little bit more detail about some of the work that you did over the summer and how many of your members were involved in it?
So, we had a group of 12 interns over the summer, and we did work on badging and ELO, which is part of our extended learning opportunities that we offer throughout the year. We did curriculum development, as well as working on a rapid response campaign for the gun violence that we see in Boston and continuing conversations about gun violence and the effect of gun violence on young people. Yeah, throughout the summer, we had those conversations and participated in other forums with other organizations.
Yes, and congratulations on getting at least eight of the 12 schools that are still missing representation, getting them on board. What seem to be some of the concerns or the pieces that, the roadblocks that are keeping all 12 schools from having a representative join BSAC at this time?
For some schools, it is lack of communication, just holes in communication, but we are reaching out to them as much as possible. And for other schools, they are far from the building building, and it's hard for them to send students consistently, and also start times and end times don't always line up with our own start times and end times.
All righty, thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Robinson. Dean Robinson.
Thanks for your report. Excellent work, as always. Can you explain a little bit more of the listening projects that you all held in the neighborhoods?
So, the Listening Project that is taking place this year is part of the Dignity in Schools Campaign, and the theme for this year is "Counselors Not Cops." So, we will be asking students about discipline within their schools and their relationships to their SROs, Student Resource Officers, as well as relationships with their guidance counselors and other adults who are able to provide support for them within their schools.
That's great. I look forward to possibly seeing, you know, a report, just to hear the outcomes of it. Thank you.
Thank you, Dean Robinson. Ms. Oliver Davila.
Thank you. Good report. You stole my question. The only thing I wanted to say is I'm glad that BSAC is part of the NEON Group. That is something that I'm also part of, so it's really great to see BSAC so present. And I also just want to say thank you to the Nellie May Foundation for partnering with BPS and partnering with BSAC. I think it's so important for us to have young voices. They are the future of everything, so I just want to publicly just say thank you to Nellie May Foundation.
Well, thank you, Ms. Oliver Davila. Are there any other questions or comments from the committee? Oh, I want to thank you for your inaugural report, Ms. Reyes, and thank you for updating us on the recruitment efforts for BSAC reps all across the city. One thing I do want to reiterate that I don't know if I heard it, was the appointment of your colleague, Mr. Rodriguez, to the Superintendent Search Committee, and so, you know, giving further amplification to Ms. Oliver Davila's comments about the importance of youth voice, and of course, we have many strong youth voices in the committee room tonight. We look forward to having your colleague help out on that search as well. Okay, thank you once again, and we'll move on now to general public comment. Before we begin with public comment this evening, I just want to put a couple notices out there for folks. First of all, on translation, we have translation services available in Spanish, Portuguese, Haitian Creole, and Cape Verdean. If any of the folks in the audience tonight need translation services, you can see one of our assistants out in the hallway, and you will be provided with a translation device. Second, we know there's going to be a lot of conversation tonight around assignment, facilities, and transportation options for students that might be affected by the proposed moves tonight. And so, we want to let you know that we have staff available here should you have specific questions following the comment that you make when you come up to speak. And I want to direct you specifically, if you have assignment questions, there are a number of people from the Welcome Services Office that are out in the hallway that stand ready to assist you with conversations about alternative assignments should these plans be put into place. I also want to note that we do have a number of folks here, Mr. Hanlon, our chief operating officer, and his staff, that can speak to the facilities and transportation questions as well. Thirdly, I just want to start with the thought that we are here to listen. We cherish our opportunity to hear from the public on important issues. This is the beginning of a process. This is not the end of a process. This is the first of multiple meetings that we will have to discuss the plans that the district will present to us in full later this evening. So, we want to be respectful. We want to listen to each and every one of you. We have more than 50 speakers already signed up to speak this evening, so we'll be here for a while, and we want to hear what each and every one of you has to say. So, we look forward to listening to you, and I will hand it over to Ms. Sullivan for further instruction.
Thank you, Mr. LaCanto. The public comment period is an opportunity for parents and other concerned parties to make brief presentations to the school committee on pertinent school issues. Questions on specific school matters are not answered at this time, but are referred to the superintendent for a later response. Questions on specific policy matters are not answered at this time, but may be the subject of later discussion by the committee. We have 55 speakers this evening, so in accordance with our policy, each speaker will have two minutes to speak, and I remind you when you have 30 seconds remaining. Those who require interpretation services will be allotted an additional two minutes. Speakers may not reassign their time to others. Large groups addressing the same topic are encouraged to consolidate their remarks or choose a spokesperson to provide testimony. Written testimony is appreciated and encouraged. Any signage must not prohibit the participation of others. Please state your name and affiliation before you begin. TV cameras will only record speakers who face the committee. We'll begin this evening with Jessica Tang, and she'll be followed by Travis Marshall and Jack Senate.
Good evening, Ms. Tang.
Good evening. Good evening. My name is Jessica Tang. Proudly represent incredible educators, 10,000 of them, active and retired in the Boston Public Schools. Yesterday, our BTU staff attended the meetings along with BPS staff where school communities were informed about the potential changes and proposals being shared tonight. It was heartbreaking to witness because while we know our students deserve new school buildings and improved facilities, schools are not just buildings. They are communities of people who hold relationships, often intergenerational, between students and teachers, teachers and parents, and teacher to teacher. And it is these relationships that are often the most important keys to student success. Any plan that ignores the true definition of a school, that is not just a building, but a community of stakeholders who come together to serve the needs of our students, will inevitably hurt the very people it is supposed to benefit. The very people who have been fighting so hard for the success of their school communities despite decades of neglect, underinvestment, and often disruptive contexts that includes changing district leadership, competing priorities, competing directives, and the latest educational fads. Based on what we have seen of the plan thus far, we are concerned about whether or not the plan will create better opportunities for impacted students. Many teachers feel that more attention needs to be paid to what current students will gain or lose as a part of this plan. Again, while we strongly believe in and have advocated for new and improved school facilities, it is critical to keep in mind that many current students will not reap the benefits of the new buildings, so we must ensure that Build BPS program truly lives up to its goal of yielding benefits for all students across the city, particularly our highest-need students during any transition period. There are several ways to accomplish this. One, ensure the preservation of successful academic programs that currently exist at the impacted schools for the benefit of students. Two, maintain continuity and stability by keeping educators in teaching positions that maximize their ability to positively impact the learning experience of students. And three, the district should remain fully open to adjusting these plans into other solutions based on stakeholder and community feedback. Our educators, parents, students, and community allies have many more insights, questions, and ideas that together can make any plan better. What we ask for and continue to ask for is details and data about what exactly the challenges are, what the possible options are. We strongly believe there's always more than just one option, and how we can utilize the history, knowledge, and experience we have to best confront the challenges ahead. You will hear many of those questions, ideas, and suggestions tonight from our school communities, and you ask that you hear us out because any disruption to the learning of our students, particularly those who have the greatest need for stability and access to all opportunities possible, should be well thought out, clearly lay out how the disruption will better result in opportunities for them, even while new buildings are being built or renovated. Again, we want to be a part of the solution, engage in true dialogue, and be heard. As practitioners on the ground and in the classrooms, we are able to pay attention to the details that are often the downfall of even the most well-intentioned plans when they are ignored. Educators at all of these schools have already proactively begun plans on their own time and of their own initiative to improve their schools. They've done so because they care, they go above and beyond, and they are open-minded to changes that will truly help their students. We hope the district is just as open-minded to what they have to offer, too, and I'm almost done. The staff at these schools have done everything asked of them for years. They have met the challenges over and over again. They've taken risks, broken apart, re-merge, redesigned, recertified, and innovated over and over again because they are making a commitment to their students, to their schools and community, and yes, to their employer. Now it is time for BPS to do what it has to do to honor that commitment in return. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Tang. And Mr. Marshall, before you begin speaking, I just want to remind my fellow members as well as the speakers to please speak into the microphone so that everybody in the room can hear us. Thank you.
Good evening. My name's Travis Marshall. I'm speaking tonight as a parent of two Boston Public School students, as a member of the Phineas Bates Executive Committee, and as a part of our city community. I am troubled that once again, BPS families find themselves blindsided by announcements that impact thousands of students, caregivers, and teachers. The lack of transparency and absence of stakeholder buy-in to the Build BPS process so far is shocking. As a parent with students in a nearly 100-year-old building, I completely understand the need to modernize our facilities. The lead in our drinking water, the lack of ADA accessibility, the classrooms that freeze in the winter and boil in September, all support this conclusion. These glaring health and safety shortcomings cannot be addressed by simply buying new furniture. However, we also know that school communities are more than a collection of stickers on a worksheet. They are vital sources of stability and trust for students and families. Dispersing these communities without regard for the important relationships between students and staff is wrong. Doing so with little warning and community feedback is unprincipled. School expansion should include keeping communities intact. Build BPS professes to improve predictability, but so far has sowed confusion among families. It claims to improve equity, but so far has closed underfunded schools serving our most disadvantaged students while renovating schools with large philanthropic operations. Families deserve community-driven decisions, but not decisions made behind closed doors. I hope we can work to fix that going forward. Thank you very much.
Our next speaker is Jack Senate. He'll be followed by Laura Taylor and Jacqueline Haley.
Good evening. Thank you for this opportunity.
Good evening.
My name is Jack Senate, and although I've spoke before this committee many, many times over the past couple decades, wearing many hats, I think this is the first time I'll be speaking to you on behalf of my son. Rowan is a 17-year-old man on the autism spectrum. He is in the Synphonized Program at Urban Science Academy. To say that Synphonized has had a positive impact on his development is an understatement. I am reminded every day in the advances that he makes there that autism is a developmental delay. It's not a lack of development, and they make sure that he catches up in every way possible. With that said, I understand change happens, and perhaps it's time with USA. That doesn't necessarily mean that those changes need to impact the students who are least capable of handling those impacts. I understand from reading through this Phase II that swing space is not available for West Roxbury and USA and Synphonized to all remain together. I would point out, however, that Synphonized was created as an adaptation of the Hennigan model where special educators and general educators were in the same classroom. I think the Synphonized program is a fantastic model. One of the reasons it works is that most, as I understand it, of the teachers at West Roxbury are dual-certified with SPED, so in considering swing spaces, I hope you will consider including Synphonized and West Roxbury together to the maximum extent possible. And if that isn't possible, defining a space for Synphonized where those special education experts are available to work with the kids and to make the accommodations in IEPs and 504s that we need to make. The other issue is, from a transition standpoint, the availability of electives at USA and West Roxbury are extraordinary, and this year, for the first time, they've been sharing electives. I hope that you will consider the availability of electives in whatever space you move to. Lastly, I understand from this that safety is potentially an issue. Please consider making public safety reviews and building reviews at the West Roxbury campus to the public so we know that our children are safe. Thank you. Finally, I understand that this is upsetting, but I want to thank you for at least making this process, the beginning of this process, transparent. When I look back 20 years ago to the level of transparency we had then compared to now, oh, this is wonderful. A lot of people are going to be hurt. There's going to be a lot upset, but thank you for at least making these steps. Thanks for talking.
Our next speaker is Laura Taylor. She'll be followed by Jacqueline Haley and Allison Dougherty.
Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Laura Taylor, and I am here to speak on behalf of the implementation of the policy for sickle cell disease and students with sickle cell disease in the Boston Public School system. First, my apologies to the audience, I was not aware that this was going to be a topic schools closing tonight, but if you could bear with us, we'd like to put a face and name to a policy that I believe you folks have reviewed and gone over. I want to start by saying, this statement has been made, and I'm sure you've heard it before, "It's a struggle every day to fight for my education and my dreams." This statement has been made by my 24-year-old daughter, Kelsey Taylor, who is living with sickle cell disease. She said it to committees like you, groups like you, but more telling to teachers, counselors, deans, et cetera, to tell them and help them to understand the struggles she deals with with sickle cell disease. The policy that you folks have reviewed and we hope to implement, I want to just tell you a few stories that can show you how this disease adversely affects people with the disease. It's called the invisible disease because our students look normal, as though they are not afflicted by any disability. It primarily affects African-American and Hispanic students, or people of that heritage, and folks believe that our kids are in a position where they are able and capable of performing at a level without the need for accommodation or help. In reality, that disease over the last two years has killed two 21-year-old young ladies for simple medical conditions. When they went into the hospital for treatment, they never returned home. And a young man like my daughter, who pursued a transplant in hopes of getting rid of this disease, and he lost his life to that transplant. Starting with my daughter's education, I've been fortunate enough to have the support of folks to help me understand the disease, medical professionals, family, et cetera. But there are families who don't. From kindergarten through middle school, I've encountered many families who have not had the ability to speak up and have hid this disease from educational professionals for fear that their children would not be treated fairly, or equally, or receive the education that they're entitled to. I implore you to implement the policy, number one, identifying students with sickle cell disease, making sure that they are absolutely evaluated to determine how this disease is affecting them because it affects people differently, every person differently, and to ensure that they are given the services and accommodations that they need. It starts with helping them to know their rights and their right to speak up and speak out about this horrible disease. Number two, very simple interim 504-type of accommodations. My daughter could not carry her heavy textbooks in middle school back and forth to school. The teachers and educators refused to provide her with the second set of textbooks. My mother, God rest her soul, provided her with a backpack on wheels. She was taunted and teased by her classmates, refused to use that backpack on wheels, and then subsequently suffered many more medical complications than she should have. Unacceptable. That needs to be addressed. The ability to go to the restroom because they are supposed to drink fluids frequently to help avoid pain. The ability to say, "I cannot speak or participate today in class because I am in pain."
Excuse me, Ms. Taylor. Thank you for your comments. I'm afraid you're past your time.
Oh, I am so sorry. I am so sorry.
If you have your comments in writing, we'll be happy to take them and share them.
I will do that. Thank you.
Wonderful. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Jacqueline Haley, and I'm the Executive Director for the Greater Boston Sickle Cell Disease Association. We're an organization that provides programs and services for those living with sickle cell disease. Tonight, I'm here to speak on behalf of the Sickle Cell Disease Advisory Board Committee that have been working at Boston Public Schools in regards to this policy. We're glad that the school committee is ready to formally adopt the sickle cell disease policy. Implementing this policy and acknowledging that sickle cell disease is a disability that interferes with a student's education will place BPS at the forefront of ensuring that students with sickle cell disease receive the quality education they have long been denied. Just to let you know, Boston Public Schools is the only school across the nation who's working on this policy like this. However, implementation must be effective, and it must happen with a sense of urgency before another school year passes. For this to occur successfully, BPS must collaborate closely with the SCD Advisory Group. Some of you have raised questions at the last committee meeting about the need for a culture shift in how students with sickle cell disease are perceived within the schools and eradicating harmful stigmas. These are important issues that are not solved with one or a handful of trainings or one-off awareness-building efforts, let alone such trainings and awareness-building efforts that are conducted without a great deal of community involvement. Rather, efforts towards a culture change regarding SCD must be thoughtfully included in all initiatives envisioned by the policy. Furthermore, it is important to recognize that many substantive elements in the new policy will require new initiatives and changes to existing protocols in order to meet the unique needs of students with STD.
20 seconds.
Almost there. Embedding in the policy is a recognition of the rights that students with SCD have to services and legal protections under federal education and civil rights laws. Critical services include supplemental instructions to make up for missed classes time and social emotional supports. We ask that the BPS school committee formally adopt the policy, and we ask that the committee affirm and oversee BPS's commitment to implement the policy swiftly, effectively, and in close collaboration with the advisory group. We thank the committee for your thoughtful consideration of this testimony.
Thank you, Ms. Haley and Ms. Taylor.
Thank you.
He didn't want to sit back there. My name is Allison Doherty. I am a graduate of the Boston Public Schools. I am a teacher of 20 years in the Boston Public Schools, and I am a parent of a Boston Public School student. I am the creator of the Synphonized Program, and I've been at West Roxbury High since I know we've spoken, and we recognize that the building is in disrepair, and this isn't necessarily a problem that was created by this council. It's been inherited. However, as other people spoke before me, we are a community, and I understand that my program is a specialized program and that you are focusing on the specialized programs and moving them to a place. However, my specialized program is an inclusive program. The fabric of my program is the teaching and learning done by all of the staff behind me, who take my students into their classrooms and learn how to teach...
Hi, love.
Hi, this is the Roosevelt. Learn how to teach students with disabilities in a different way. So it's not just my program, it's not a substantially separated program, it's a program that is through the fabric of the whole community. Our building is not just the building. The school is not the building, it's us inside of it. And I am asking you to please consider sitting down with us, with the union, with the teachers, with the parents who love our school. Dallas, you're really screwing me up right now, kid. And have a conversation with us and look for other alternative opportunities. It might not be something that everyone loves, but it might not be something that everyone Our students deserve this. This is my future, this is the future of Boston Public Schools right here, and I want to know that when I send my students, my children, to the schools that they're going to be respected. So I think that's my time now. I'm a little distracted. Thank you. Thank you. So please, sit down with us, talk to us, let's come up with a different solution. We can do this together. We can do it together.
Thank you to Master Doherty for the floor show.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Doherty. We have a number of students waiting to testify, so I'm going to call them ahead of the teachers, if that's okay? We're going to start with Brielle Foster. Alyssa Giuliano. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Brielle Foster, and I am the junior class representative for Urban Science Academy. I am an upcoming senior, and I would just like to say to start off that I'm very disappointed. I'm not only disappointed in the district, but I'm also disappointed in BPS as a whole. I feel as though it was your job to make sure that our school was intact and safe, you spent money on irrational things that didn't contribute to our school at all. You cut $600,000 out of the Urban Science Academy budget two years ago, then took another $100,000 out last year. You are tearing apart our school and expecting us to be okay with that. Westy has grown to be a family, especially since the passing of our friend Chad Eaton Which you all know of. Chad was my friend, a really close friend of mine, and also a close friend of all of my classmates. He was very important to us, and in three months, his one-year anniversary is coming up, and we only have his gravesite in our school building as a community to go to to remember him. And you guys want to tear that down. His death affected our school in ways that you cannot imagine. Losing a classmate is no joke. And you guys want to break apart our school just because the building is not intact. Why just disband the entire school when you can keep the school relocated in different grades or in a different process, not just disband the whole school as a whole? Me and my peers for our senior year should not have to transfer to another school that we don't trust and don't know. Building a bond with teachers in the inner city is harder than you guys may think. I don't know your personal lives or how you guys grew up, but being in a Boston Public School and having a teacher to trust is really important because as students, as teenagers, we don't trust much. We feel that as this school that we chose, we should be able to go and graduate from it. And you say your motto is focus on children, but all we see is your focus on convenience and money. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Foster.
Ms. Giuliano.
Hi, my name is Alyssa Giuliano. I'm a senior at West Roxbury Academy. I've been here since my freshman year, and it's sad to see such a big part of the community crumble down to pieces because of you guys. What are the seniors supposed to do now with our college references? They're going to look at us like we're crazy to think that we can get into these colleges after our school just got ripped down and got kids out of it. They're going to think that we're bad kids and that we don't have as much knowledge as anybody else because our school got dislocated, well, ripped down from us, and we had to get, everybody had to get placed out of that, including the juniors. Like Brielle was saying, how are they supposed to do this now? They don't have any of the references that they need, they don't have the teachers that they've grown with, they don't have them to write the references for them, they don't have as much convenience as we did as seniors this year. Our school should not be shut down. Money isn't something that we need right now, we need people to come together and make it bigger than what it should be. We've been asking for years about our buildings to get fixed before I was a freshman, that was four years ago, so imagine how long it's been like this. I don't understand why, all of a sudden, since now a different school wants to take over our school and we have more amenities, that they get to do that and they get to better our house that we made for us, and they get to get that and everything that else comes with that. With everything that comes with that. They get to get new everything, and we've been asking that for years. I just had a conversation in school about this today, and a lot of people that were there from the school committee had nothing to say about it at all, and they ducked and dodged everything we asked them about it. They didn't give us any answers. They didn't give us any answers as to why they were doing it, they just told us that there's reasons as the building wasn't safe for us, but I don't understand how it's been safe for this many years, and now that another school wants it, it's unsafe for us.
Giuliano.
Our next speaker is Ajene Nunez, followed by Ayesha Semankis and Axel Gonzalez.
Can you hear me?
Good evening.
My name is Ajene Nunez. I'm a senior at Urban Science Academy/WRA. I have attended West Roxbury Education Complex for the past three years, and it has been nothing but a wonderful experience. Even though it is my last year, most people are probably thinking, "Why are the seniors bothered by it? They're graduating." But it's because we are a family. It affects us all as a whole school. The school has been making budget cuts since my sophomore year, causing most teachers to lose their jobs and messing up teacher-student bonds. The district says in order to fix our school, it will be a multimillion-dollar project. The district also says that they have known that Westy was not safe for the September 2018 school year, since July, so they took the easy way out and wanted to spend over $300,000 to do roof repairs that we do need, and we are grateful for it, but looking at the roof since they did their repairs this summer, it looks the exact same. They renovated our library floor, that's something we do not need. So you mean to tell me that they did the library over just to end up knocking the whole building down? That is a complete waste of money. Now, me as a senior, seeing my community go down into shambles is very degrading. So many people have memories there, so many beautiful bonds, and I feel as though the district is being insensitive. Maybe if they didn't spend a lot of money on unnecessary things, then we wouldn't have this problem right now. Thank you.
Hello, I would like to start off by stating a fact. There are roughly around 125 schools in the Boston BPS district, and today we are talking about closing two. The moment I walked into Urban Science Academy, I've never felt more welcome in an environment. I've been to different schools, and never have I felt so many people, so many people in a community. And it tears me apart to know that the district is trying to take this down. I mean, I met this classmate, and she had anxiety attacks meeting people. Now, when you say you want to send us to an environment that we don't know, we're not used to, things like that are bound to happen, and that is not right. This is a problem that the district should have fixed years ago because it has been existing years ago. Why are we doing this now? I would like to end in a quote, "Education isn't a preparation to life, it is life itself."
Hello, everyone. My name is Axel Gonzalez. I was born in Mexico City, and I moved to Boston on September 5th of 2013. I was 11 years old and spoke no English, with not only the school system being different, but the culture being drastically different to the one I grew up with. Moving to a new country was extremely scary. My first day of school came. I was in sixth grade, and I had no idea what I was going into. Not going to lie, it was difficult at first. Walking through the hallways and not understanding a word of what everyone else was saying, I was afraid. I was afraid that I would be called out by a teacher, and I wouldn't know the question or the answer, or simply afraid that I wouldn't be able to make any friends. However, all those fears soon started to go away. The SEI program that the McCormick offered, apart from teaching me the language, it helped me feel less ashamed and afraid because I realized there were others like me who didn't speak English. Now, you better believe my teachers were good, because within one year, I was moved into a regular class. In seventh grade, the opportunities only became more abundant. My BLA teacher encouraged me to join debate, so I did. I loved it, and it taught me new skills which I would not have learned otherwise. My science teacher encouraged us to think outside the box, and was always planning fun and interesting new ways to learn. Obviously, funds were not enough and were never great. My teacher would sometimes use his own money to help us and teach the class. McCormick really built a home for me, one that I still go back to. What I understand is that BPS wants to create more opportunities and equal opportunities and better environments for students, especially with those that don't speak English. What I think is not clear yet is that teachers is what creates the environment, not a building. I go to BLA, I'm a BLA student now, I'm a junior there. BLA has a real old building, and let's not even talk about BLS. I don't see any of those schools moving anytime soon.
20 seconds.
We hear that young voices are, we hear that young voices, "We are the young voices of the future, and we are the future." But you know what? I don't want all the voices of my future to be English. I want it to be Spanish, Vietnamese, Portuguese, or Chinese, or any other language. I would end my testimony with one question. Are you going to actually think about it, or have you already made your mind and every person in this room just wasted their time? person in this room just wasted their time? Thank you.
Our next speaker is Franco Yi. He'll be followed by Dariana Amparo and Noah Pierre.
Hello, my name is John Franco Yi. I'm an 11th grader in the Boston Public School System. I'm speaking as a junior class representative for Urban Science Academy. I strongly oppose your proposal and I have a very brief but straightforward question that we'll get to shortly. It is my understanding that the condition of our building is the reason for shutting down our school. And thinking about this has led me to ask the question, why is English Highs not being shut down? Why is Burke not being shut down? Why is Madison not being shut down? Why is Brighton not being shut down? Having spoken to people from every single one of those schools that has transferred to USA, they've told me that those schools are either in the same or worse condition than our school. So why is it that our high school and only our high school, Urban Science Academy and West Roxbury Academy, why is it that we are being unfairly, suddenly, and specifically targeted? Why is it that our opportunities, futures, and communities being taken away? That's all. Thank you.
While the next student's approach, I just want to recognize our city councilor-at-large, Anissa Sabi George. Chair of the council's education committee has joined us. Apologies for not recognizing you earlier.
Hello, my name is Dariana Amparo and I'm currently an 11th grader student at West Roxbury Academy. Um...
Okay, I'm gonna speak for her.
Not for me.
Well, for both of us. Every time somebody registers to get into BPS schools, they get put straight into West Roxbury or USA, so, and we always welcome them with open arms, so I don't understand why it's getting shut down, like, like, it's the first, like, that's the first school to like, really for kids to get put in, so I don't understand like, why it's getting shut down because we always welcome people with open arms. Another thing is that for us, because we're juniors right now, it's gonna be hard for us to get into a school next year or to be valedictorian or to get scholarships for I mean, it's heartbreaking because I really want to prove my parents wrong because they always doubted me and said that I wouldn't get anywhere, so I... It's all good. It's all good. I want to actually do good. And I don't want to go into a new environment because West Roxbury and Urban Science Academy is my family, my community. And they're the ones that helped me through everything and I can't just go into a new environment where I'm not gonna know anything, I'm gonna be behind and I'm gonna ask, wait, what are we doing? How do I do this? Because you're taking that from me. That's it. That's it for you. I'm not done.
Could I just, excuse me, could I just get your name before you leave?
Kalia Roberts. Like I said before, my name is Dariana. As an 11th grader, we're, like, our school is a family, so we have teachers that have teacher-student bonds that we go to certain teachers about certain stuff, personal issues, school issues, et cetera. And as 11th graders, basically, our whole school experience is getting snatched from us because we're getting put into different schools. It's not like we're, oh, relocating to a different school. We're all being spread apart. We don't know what school we're going to. You guys have not been clear about what's gonna happen next and something needs to be done. Why didn't, like, you guys have been saying that, you guys have been having meetings about this, et cetera, et cetera, but nothing has been brought up until now. And it's a waste of our time.
Thank you, ladies.
Next speaker is Noah Pierre and he'll be followed by Mibsum Wiggins and Giuliana Catano.
Good evening, my name is Noah Pierre and I attend WREC, which you're planning to shut down at the end of this year. I'm not here to insist on the emotional effect of the changes that we're going through because I think you've heard enough of that and I think you've heard it over the past few years and if that mattered enough, then we wouldn't be going through that right now. I want to be more factual. We recently have an open house where Mr. Joel Boyd told us that we needed to get more students to come into our school, the school that you're kicking us out of, because we have low enrollment issues. He precise that our school was one of the many BPS schools that were suffering from this. My question is, and I want it answered, if the school budgets are down because we have so many open seats due to several reasons such as low enrollment, which comes with things like the spread of charter schools amongst other things, how come you can't reconfigure and find a place for us to finish our high school careers altogether? I want to know, I want to know, why do we have to pay for the district's irresponsibility? You got, you can't tell me that BPS is one of the oldest and most successful educational districts in the country, can't find a temporary building and rearranged it in a way that we can finish our high school careers together. The school is not just a building, it's the community, as many people have stated before me. And I know that you guys have a lot of students that you're taking care of and because of this, you see us as numbers. At Westy, we're not numbers, we're individuals that we're, we're listened to and we're cared for and we don't want to lose that, we refuse to lose it. Additionally, we don't want our rebuilt school, no matter how long it's rebuilt, and to go to the people that are already in the West Roxbury community and that can't afford to go to any school that they want. We want our rebuilt school to go to our little sisters and brothers or little cousins. We don't want it to go to the people that can already afford going to good schools and private schools. We want one day to send our kids to WRA or USA saying that we went there. We don't want a new school in our building. We get that there's no possible way for us to continue at our school, but if you're gonna have to rebuild it, you have to rebuild it for us, not for other people. We're not accepting it. I really hope that this is not a masquerade, that you guys actually hear us out. With all due respect, I really hope that you hear us out and that you do something to answer our concerns. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Pierre.
My name is Miguel Prieto and I am the father of Melissa Prieto, who is a teacher at the McCormack. She teaches ESL. And I will be translating for the middle school students of the McCormack. They speak in Spanish, so they are very, they are recently arrivals of the country, so I will translate in English.
Thank you.
Mi nombre es Giuliana.
My name is Giuliana.
Y vengo de la McCormack.
And I'm a student from the McCormack.
Yo creo que hablo por todos los estudiantes de la McCormack al decir que es injusto remodelar nuestro edificio.
I, I believe that I speak for all the students of the McCormack and the fact that I find unfair that they're going to remodel my school.
El cual pienso que está en perfecto estado.
A school that I believe is in perfect conditions.
Yo quiero decir, esa escuela fue la primera escuela que tuve cuando llegué a Boston.
I want to let you guys know that this is the first school that I came to when I came from my country.
Es como mi segunda casa, no puedo asimilar la idea de que la quieran, de no, perdón, no puedo asimilar la idea de no saber si va a volver a ser la misma escuela con los mismos maestros.
I, I, that's, that's like my second home and I just cannot believe and I just cannot assimilate the idea that I'm going to be in a school that I don't know if it's going to be there for me or for the people that are gonna come after me.
Esa escuela tiene unos maestros los cuales nos han enseñado con paciencia, nos han educado como debe ser.
That school has, has a staff of teachers that have taught me with patience and they have taught me the way that I needed for them to teach me so I could learn.
¿Qué va a pasar con los maestros?
What's going to happen with the teachers?
Nos preocupa qué va a pasar porque ellos también son nuestra familia.
I am so concerned what's going to happen with them because they are also part of my family.
Nosotros en esa escuela tenemos un programa de I, eh, qué? De I, C?
In, in my school, I, we have an ESL program.
Nos sentimos cómodos donde estamos, donde pertenecemos.
We feel comfortable in that program where we feel that we belong.
Donde aprendimos a ser hermanos, a respetar otras culturas.
Wait, now I'm getting emotional here. Where, where I, where I feel that I'm part of a family, that I, that I'm, that part of a, a family that respects my culture.
Y me enorgullo de ese decir que soy pantera de corazón.
And I am so proud to say that I am a panther with heart. We have a lot of questions.
¿Por qué quieren hacerlo?
Why do you guys want to do this?
¿Para qué?
For what?
¿Cuál es la necesidad?
What is the need? She's done.
Thank you.
Our next speaker, our next speaker is Mibsum Wiggins, followed by Darrell Fernandez and Allison Martinez.
Hello, my name is, sorry, my name is Mibsum Wiggins. I'm a student at the West Roxbury Education Complex. This is currently my junior year at the school and I would like to start off by saying that I express deep concern. That concern pertaining to the fact that you guys at the BPS District plan on transferring hundreds of students out of their native community into a area that is completely unknown to them. I, along with many of my fellow peers, are appalled by the fact that you guys are willing to disregard everything that we have done at our school and all the hard work and effort we have put into getting to the position we are in now. Additionally, we are fed up by the fact that you guys are willing to disregard everything that we have put in and all of the work and effort and friendships we have made at our schools that we are in. And we are fed up that we are treated like we don't know what's going on and the fact that you, that you guys think that we are ignorant and don't know everything you guys Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wiggins.
Hola, mi nombre es Allison y soy una estudiante de la escuela McCormack.
Hi, my name is Allison and I am a student of the McCormack Middle School.
Yo siento que el querer, el querer... el querer cerrar la escuela por dos años es una injusticia.
I believe that the fact that you guys want to close my school in the next two years is an injustice.
No entiendo las razones.
I don't understand the reasons.
La escuela McCormack es muy buena y los maestros también.
Our school is a very good school and our teachers are very good too.
Yo no hubiera podido hablar públicamente si no fuera porque mis maestros me enseñaron a no tener miedo de luchar en contra de las injusticias.
Give me a break, guys. I wouldn't have been able to speak publicly if my teachers haven't taught me to be able to be brave and to, and to speak to you guys and to fight against injustice.
Yo me siento muy triste el que quieran destruir una, una escuela en la que los maestros y los estudiantes han creado una familia, una familia en que todos estamos muy unidos.
I am so sad because we feel that you guys want to destroy a school that's already a family, a family that feels so united.
Y esa familia nos ha enseñado a respetar otras culturas y aprender.
It's, this, this family, this family has taught us to respect other cultures and to become a family.
No cierran la escuela McCormack.
Please do not close the McCormack school.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Darrell Fernandez. Mr. Fernandez with us?
My name is Daris Fernandez, is that what you mean?
Daris?
Daris Fernandez?
Okay, must be you, sir. Have a seat.
Okay.
Good evening.
Hi, I'm Daris Fernandez and I'm representing USA, Urban Science Academy, a subsidiary of our WEC. I'm a real devoted soldier when it comes to education, so if it really is put in, just like, set in stone that you have to remove us from our education complex, then there are really some things that you need to answer for us that way we can keep getting our education and reap all the benefits that we deserve. Because I feel as though those have been disregarded. First, this is in regards to opportunities that arise from going to school for a set amount of time in the city of Boston. Whether it's two or three full years, that will no longer be possible. Whether students leave now or in January when we were allowed to leave to have first choice to go into high schools or finishing our year at WRA, the juniors there will no longer have the opportunity to have scholarships and other opportunities in whatever school or career they want to pursue because they are not in a place where they set themselves up to have bonds, get recommendations, and prove themselves in positions that they can no longer receive, such as valedictorian or salutarian. Whatever school we end up going to because we've not been received any suggestions as to school that can provide the opportunities we get at West Roxbury Academy, such as special needs education, teachers that care and will put time out of their day for the students and money out of their pockets that the school district does not provide. Teachers just don't do the same things or have the same bonds with us in other schools and you're taking that away. We've taken years to prepare ourselves to have everything we need, the credentials, the skills, and the ability to go to college and do whatever we want in life, to enjoy it and have a background that lets us do so. Instead of disregarding us and not only doing that but not providing steps for us to follow to be prepared to do so, you decided to spring an ambush on us with this plan to shut down our school in the middle of the first semester without telling us. You've known since July and although this is still a pending decision, you didn't tell us about this until day of. I was told this morning the decision would be made and yes, I'm still here with this speech, asking you questions, but we weren't prepared, we weren't told until today. If we weren't so ready, you wouldn't have any answers or any rebuttals from us and then you'd have a decision without any opinions. You have to be more transparent with decisions you're making, whether you're holding these meetings or not. We weren't given the opportunity to prepare this sort of, for this sort of thing in our career in high school and that's unjust. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Fernandez.
Our next speaker is Ashley Yanes.
My name is Dejana Howard. I'm a freshman at West Roxbury Academy and when I heard the news last night, I was disappointed and all of you. It, like, when I first came to West Roxbury Academy, I was so nervous, like, I'm, I'm straight out of middle school, what am I gonna do? What if nobody likes me? What if I don't make friends? I, I go to, I meet my dean, Ms. Alfred. The first thing she tells to me is, "I know you're a brave, smart, intelligent young woman. I know I'm gonna take you under my wing." And since that day, she's been there for me, like, nonstop and I appreciate her for every little bit that she's done for me and I appreciate each and every one of the staff at West Roxbury Academy and USA and all the students too. Shout out to the seniors, the juniors, the sophomores, the freshmen, all of us. I became part of a, not just... I became part of not just a school but a family, and it was a rocky road. It's only October, it's still the beginning of the school year, and you guys just hit us with this sad news, like, I'm twenty, class of 2020 will not be, like, might not be graduating with the people that they started with. That's heartbreaking news, because I don't like having to open up to new people every year. I wanted to stick to West Roxbury Academy, and you guys are trying to close it down because of what you want. You're not trying to hear what the school and what the students want. This is all about money, and it's not fair. It's not fair to our families, or the students especially. You guys supposed to be focused on children, you're focused on the money.
Thank you, Ms. Howard.
Next we'll hear from Ashley Yanes, followed by Jessica Pontez and Jasmine Andrade.
You'll be fine.
Hola, me llamo Ashley.
Hi, my name is Ashley.
Estudio en la McCormack.
And I am a student at the McCormack.
Y vengo a representar la McCormack.
And I come here to represent my school, the McCormack.
Vengo a decir que esta escuela nos da muchas oportunidades.
I want to let you guys know that my school gives a lot of opportunities.
A nosotros y no es justo que quieran cerrar la escuela.
And it's not fair that this school is going to be closed.
Yo llevo tres años en la McCormack y esta escuela es super buena para todos los estudiantes.
I have been in this school for three years now, and this school is super cool for all the students.
Para los latinos y para los demás.
For all the Latinos and everybody else.
Y tenemos buenísimos programas.
And we have excellent programs.
Y estoy orgullosa de ser una de las panteras.
And I am so proud to be a panther of my school. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Yanes.
Hi, my name's Jessica Pontez. I'm actually a graduate from the McCormack Middle School. I'm a graduate from the McCormack Middle School, and I love to be a panther. Me hearing this sad news that the McCormack's getting shut down for two years, that's just heartbroken, because that school motivated me and got me where I'm at right now. Now I'm a junior at West Roxbury Academy. Yeah, me hearing this news got me miserable. I'm a student that, like, I give up, but then I don't give up, because I achieve. I got, this is not even a school to me, I find it like a family. I've been at West Roxbury for just one year. I feel like I've been here for like four years. These teachers treat me like they're my family. These students treat me like they're my sisters, my brothers. I just, like, I feel like I'm not getting what I want. I wanted to, like, me hearing that, oh, West Roxbury's gonna shut down, I don't feel like this should happen. I feel like you guys don't care what we have to say. I feel like after this, you guys are just saying that, oh, that West Roxbury, we just gotta get shut down because of building. If y'all been knew the building was messed up, for like, if y'all been knew how bad our building was, y'all should have been did something about it. Like, I don't understand, I just, I don't, I'm not trying to come out rude or anything, I'm just like, I'm emotional right now, and I'm just really sad, and like, because I'm a junior, and I feel like if I go to another school, I'm not gonna know where I'm gonna be at, find myself. I got deans who support me through everything. I've been through so much through West Roxbury. I've been through so much at DM McCormack. Everybody who knows me knows what type of person I am. It's just so sad to hear that both of my, both of my schools are trying, they're trying to close it. It's like, these schools are good schools, like, I don't understand why don't y'all focus on BLS? They're racist, like, why can't y'all, you know? Why, why? This, 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 I'm sorry. This, this, I'm sorry, but there's 700 and plus, there's 700 and plus students at West Roxbury. Where are they all gonna go to? This, you guys have to work about this, like, we need to know answers now, not in January, not in December. I need to know answers now, not know later or nothing. I need to know, I need to know where am I gonna go? Where? Where? Who's gonna help me now? Where am I, like, now I'm gonna feel lost in the world, like, who's gonna give me all, where's my recommendations gonna come from, my references? I need some help. Please, can you?
Thank you, Ms. Pontez.
I do not want DMC, a former graduate, to shut down and my high school, West Roxbury Academy. Please do something about this, please.
Thank you, Jessica. I know we had a chance to speak this morning out in the, we will have more answers and more resources onsite at your school, but right at this moment, Monica Roberts and her team are just outside the door if you do want to have a conversation now, but we'll have lots of opportunities for conversations. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Jasmine Andrade. I... I'm currently a senior and student body president at Urban Science Academy. I'm here today not only to express my anger, but to also be the voice for my fellow lower classmates and my teachers. For four years, I have been involved with this community and all the resources this school has to offer. Shutting down this school, not only are you depriving students of these opportunities, but you're also shutting down the culture. Faculties and students worked tirelessly to provide the best school community where everyone is involved. It's not fair to completely take something so important from us. USA shaped me to be the leader I am today, and without it, I don't know where I would be. I don't know if I would be here today speaking with you guys. My sympathy would go out to the current freshmen that the district emphasized so much that we need to increase enrollment and recruit more students, all to end up shutting down the school. We even created a freshman academy at Westy, due to the merge that was dawned on us so recently, where students, I'm sorry, dawned on us so recently, where students can feel comfortable in their own environment and also make close connection with teachers, all for them and for their class only. Just to tell them it was no point and to find somewhere else. Stop breaking down our community. Stop trying to separate us and stop neglecting and start seeing us more than price tags. We are humans, and when told our school is being shut down completely and tearing up, and, I'm sorry. We are humans, and when told our school is being shut down completely, you're tearing up what we worked so hard on. There is space, there has to be. Keep trying and keep searching. All I'm asking is for you not to give up, because clearly we're here today trying to make a change.
Thank you, Ms. Agati.
Our next speaker is David Venter. He'll be followed by Nami Wen and Minasha Harris. David Venter? David Venter? Oh, come on up, sir. Gentlemen's before you, and then it'll be Nami Wen.
Why don't we hear from Mr. Wen since he's at the stage, and we'll hear from Mr. Venter next. Thank you.
My name is Nami Wen from, I'm a junior in BCLA. I'm from McCormack. I'm very sad to hear what's gonna happen to McCormack. I loved that school so much. That school taught me so many things, like the fact that I love learning so much and I hate school. But it's more of, I hate what school does, the punishment. You can get punished for wearing a hood or for missing days, you know, punish you for making you miss more days. Like, it don't make sense. And I think Jessica said it best, or represented the emotion that kids like me feel. Kids who don't react to punishment well, we don't, if you push on us, we will push back. We don't learn like that. Teachers in McCormack, they teach by getting us interested in the subject. I've retained so much knowledge from my teachers, ethical and mathematical. Right. The biggest thing that makes me scared that the school might close down is the fact that November 28th was the death of my, one of my closest friends in McCormack, Angel. And about a few weeks before, there was another kid named Ija. Ija, I knew him since game one. I love, he was like a brother to me. Angel, it broke me, and I'm gonna cut this short because I'm gonna get emotional, but we immortalized him at that school. And if that school is gone, then a little piece of Angel's gone too.
Thank you, Mr. Wen.
After Mr. Venter, we'll hear from Minasha Harris and Dia Shi Hu.
Hello.
Good evening.
My name is David Venter. I have a son in Urban Science Academy. He just started. He's 14 years old. I just want to talk a little bit about my journey. My son is on the autism spectrum. I'm a single parent. My son comes from a different constellation-type family. Okay, and I adopted him when he was about four years old, so he came with significant challenges. Because he came from the foster care system, I had to put him in a Boston public school. I went to Metco. I was in Lincoln and Sudbury. My journey through Boston public schools has been difficult. Not because of the teachers and the educators, because of the system. Because the teachers and the educators partnered with me. When I got Joshua in the school, it was all about inclusion. He was high on the spectrum, so it was about inclusion, but nobody knew how to do inclusion. So the teachers and the educators were saying, hey, listen, he's high functioning, he needs to be in an inclusive environment. Unfortunately, we don't have certified teachers in special ed, and we don't have enough supports for him, so try this school. So Joshua's been in four different schools since four. The people in this building know me, because I advocate for his education. They know me, okay? So I'm a little bit angry, all right, because I had to push him through different schools and different programs. Now, his last school was very difficult for me, because a lot of these schools say they're inclusion, but inclusion doesn't mean we take all.
20 seconds?
It doesn't, okay? So I'm gonna push forward. Last year was very difficult for me, because most of the schools and the school that he was at, they taught by discipline. Our kids are always taught by discipline. This is the first school, the very first school, who took my son in, who knows how to treat him, who knows how to deal with him, who knows, and you know what that does for me as a parent? I don't have to run back and forth for hearings. I don't have to be called throughout the day that your son is doing this and that and the other, and having teachers call me saying, hey, listen, they're setting him up, they're targeting him, you need to get him out of here. I, my son, was beat up three times last year in class, because of this different family constellation and because of what he looks like, because he looks like a white kid, okay? And so now you want to talk about safety? Am I supposed to put him in another unsafe environment? Because he's safe now. Thank you. And the last thing I want to say, I just heard, because I just heard that you guys spent $18 million on that field and that facility that is around West Roxbury High, that $18 million should have been put into school.
Ms. Harris?
Hello, everyone. My name is Minasha Harris, and I'm a student at West Roxbury Academy. I am a junior, and this is my second year at Westy. Being a part of my school made me feel whole. I'm a part of a student government softball and cheerleading team. I've never been so involved with the school until I came here. And now on this day, my fellow classmates and I have been told that we have to leave our school and be broken apart in different schools for the remainder of time that we have left in our high schools. What I want to know is why are you trying to take away us from a place where we have grown into better people? You claim that we have a school where physically it can harm us, but if you are trying to rebuild it to make it a modern, brand-new school, why are you kicking us out, the students that worked so hard to achieve success? And their sweat and tears lie on every corner that you set your eyes on in our school. I bounced around from school to school growing up, and because of this, I grew cold and silent, and Westy has changed that for me. I feel like I had no control over the education that I had been told by all of my relatives that I must obtain. The fact that you are basically controlling something that I have the right to have and where I have the right to choose, why I get it, it pushes me to think I'm like living back in Jim Crow laws when things are becoming more, where districts control everything. And the school, the students that have pushed and worked so hard to achieve everything that they are achieving today are getting pushed into worse conditions than ever. We should be all able to stay. I'm a proud Raider. This is my family. This is my home. Please don't take us away from my home.
Dear school committee, my name is Dia Shou, and I'm here to express my concerns about what is happening around us in our school community. And I'm really frustrated about what's happening in our school and the fact that it's gonna shut down, because it's gonna affect directly, directly the students, specifically the juniors. Because we are, we need to be in a certain school to get a certain scholarship, at least for two years. And now we are gonna spend only one year in another school, so that means they are taking the right of us going in a good school. And BPS is promising support, but really, we don't need a support to go in another school. We need our school back. That's what we want to do. And is really BPS thinking about how this is affecting us? And if the true problem is only the building, then I'm sure if BPS cared about the students, they would find a way to find another building for us. Who gives anyone the right to destroy our future? And we chose West Roxbury Academy because we believe that the other schools were not as good as this one. So why do we need to go back to the schools that we did not decide in the first place to go to? And why can we, I'm pretty sure that all of you had amazing years of high school. Why can't we have amazing years of high school and finish and graduate from the high school that we started from? And the word quit does not exist in any of our vocabulary, and we will fight for it.
Our next speaker is Katari Giglio. She'll be followed by Bianca Bolista and Jezebella Tuxera.
Good evening. My name is Katari. I'm here as an 11th grader from West Roxbury Academy. I took the day today to write and consider my own opinions and questions, but also the opinions of some of my teachers and other students. A lot of us are asking the same questions and have the same concerns that are not being properly answered. Why are other schools being moved without any trouble, but we have to be cut off from our community that we already know and feel so comfortable with? The Dearborn moved a while ago. Boston Arts Academy moved as well. Why can't we have the same opportunity? What makes our school and our students so different from them? Why can the schools be, oh, we have been told that there isn't any space around the district to place both of our schools together in another building. So if that's not an option, then the best choice would be to move only 10th and 11th grade together. These are the two most important years of our high school education, not counting how our senior year will be. In this school, as students, we built our reputation. Our teachers know us. They know our special needs. They know how to deal with each and every single one of us. They know how we all learn differently and how much work we put into our classes. If you move us now, we lose all of that. There is no way that our community can be replaced. How will my teachers and guidance counselors support me next year for my college transition, when this will be their first time meeting me? when this will be their first time meeting me? I am placed at an unfair disadvantage and this is not the promise BPS made to their students. There is many other schools that are in the same or worse condition than ours. Why are, why aren't they being shut down? Why are we being targeted? This issue has been known for so long and just now it's being addressed. The school is still accepting transfer students to this day. And if you knew you were closing us down, then why would you let new students come to us? A transfer can be very overwhelming, so why make it twice as hard? What's the point? Hispanic and African-American students that want to be successful have to put in twice the effort than a regular American student has to. Even if we're already in 2018, almost going into 2019, white schools are still given twice the privilege that we can only dream to have. Many of our classes still don't have textbooks. My English class has had a broken door since the start of the year. And no matter how many times we've complained about it, no one does anything to fix it. You coming and shutting, shutting us down does not, um, you coming and shutting our school down only reinforces that feeling that this district does not care about us and does not see us as people. You see us as a, not as a community, but as numbers. I'm almost done. In the summer, the students and teachers working in summer school were told to leave the building because it was quote unsafe. But it has been known to us that other people were using the building and we don't know why. If you don't listen to us, if you decide to shut us down completely, no matter how much you help me, my senior year will be twice as hard as it should be. I moved here this year all the way from Miami, Florida. You may promise me that my transfers will be considered, but how can you assure me that I'm going to have the same quality education that I'm having here? How can how can you make up to me, pushing me five steps back? I have been working and breaking my back this year to be able to do good in school. I earned the confidence and appreciation of all my teachers. My senior year should be only about um, my future, concentrating on college applications, on getting the scholarships I need to even think about going to college.
Ms. Giglio, thank you for your comments. I appreciate it. Next, we'll hear from Bianca Bolista, followed by Jezebella Tuxera and Byron Tippens.
Hola, mi nombre es Bianca.
Hi, my name is Bianca.
Vengo de la escuela McCormick Middle School.
And I come from the McCormick Middle School.
Aún no entiendo por qué ustedes no van a trasladar a otra escuela. Hay problemas?
I still don't know why you guys are going to transfer, transfer us to other schools. Is there a problem?
Nosotros tenemos muchas oportunidades en esa escuela. Tenemos programas de ESO.
We have a lot of opportunities in our school. We have ESL programs.
Tenemos seguridad, estamos cómodos porque
We have safety, we're comfortable.
Porque ahí mismo cerca tenemos la JFK y no vamos como tú sabes.
Because we have, we have a good train station that's close by, so.
Es una escuela super, super buena. Ahí aprendí cómo respetar, cómo respetar otras culturas.
It's a super cool school. That's where I learned to respect other cultures.
Yo sí soy pantera de corazón.
And I am a panther of heart.
Hablo por los estudiantes de la escuela McCormick.
I speak on behalf of the students of the McCormick.
Nos sentimos bastante alegres en la educación que ya tenemos.
We are so happy with the education that we're receiving right now.
Y que tendremos y que otros estudiantes tendrán en el futuro.
That we are going, we're going to continue to have and the other students are going to continue to have.
Enfoquen otras cosas, si no nos remuevan la escuela.
Please focus on something else, but don't take us out of our school.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Jezebella Tuxera and I'm a senior at Urban Science Academy. I understand that the building has to be broken down, but what's really affecting us is that you're breaking up our community. Westy is so small and everybody knows everybody and that's how we formed the bond that we have. The merge between USA and Westy has made us even stronger. We're so much more than a school. We're family and you're gonna hear this from everyone. I have been at Westy for all four years and it's been like a second home. Sure, as seniors, we get to finish high school there, but we're not going to have a high school to go back to and visit teachers who supported us while we're in college. I blame BPS for this because they took so long to give our school the attention it needed for years. They invested $18 million into a field that wasn't even renovated for us when they should have been doing it for our school. I feel for the lower class too because juniors who have been there for three years are going to be split apart and unable to graduate with their class. We have a whole freshman academy where our freshmen have built a bond together, especially since they have just transitioned from middle school and are going to have to start that new school process again. BPS doesn't care about us. They could find us a building, but to them, it would just be easier to throw us anywhere. We want you to move us somewhere to, together to stay until our building is completed. I understand that you want to open it up as a new high school, but it should still be West Roxbury Academy.
Our next speaker is Byron Tippens. Nope. And he'll be followed by Chris Viscano and Josie Cologne.
Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Chris Viscano. I go to Boston Day and Evening. I'm a senior there. And I was in the McCormick. I see the McCormick like a second home with a second family, you know, like, even though I'm not a student there anymore, like, I still go back to the school to talk to my teachers. And they have had my back with times where I was down. And they've helped me to get to where I am now because I feel as if, if I didn't get the support there at the time when I was in eighth grade, I wouldn't be in the place I would be now, like I am now. And I appreciate the fact that I did get the support, you know? Shout out to Ms. Vasia. She's like, like a mother to me. Same thing Ms. Maja. They like really helped me out. Like Nami, who was here, he's like a brother to me, honestly. He has been there for me through thick and thin. Even times where a friend of mine, Angel, he died off of gun violence and it really took me to this really dark place in life and they was all there. We was all together, helping each other out. And I like, it like really mean a lot to me. It means a lot. And my brother goes there, you know? And out of the fact that the school's gonna get shut down and XL's gonna be in there, I went to XL in my freshman year and it was really, I could say, it's not the type of school for me or anyone because they wouldn't give this, they would, they didn't give the type of support that I needed. And the fact that they, it looked like they didn't even like care at all, like didn't put no effort, you know? Like, I would just be like asking questions, like, oh, how do I do this? Well, I'm not understanding. They'll just look at me, laugh and lean back like if like
20 seconds.
Oh, like, you just, just something that you're gonna have to figure out yourself, which really made me mad. And honestly, I did drop out that school and I continued school from Boston Day and Evening and I'm doing way better. You know, my teachers, my old teachers from middle school always had my back through it. And yeah, that's all I gotta say.
Thank you, Sarah.
Our next speaker is Josie Cologne, followed by Arsal Milo and Elizabeth Reynolds Lupo.
Hello, my name is Georgiana Cologne and I'm here to support my teachers the same way they supported me the minute I went through those doors in my first year of middle school at the McCormick. Although I was not in the seventh grade yet, the community was so close that by the time I went, I made it to the seventh grade, I knew everyone in the building. My teachers who helped me build my confidence, my mindset, and my goals are fearful to be being split from the strong, the strong community we've been able to build. Ms. Doily, who helped me become the debater that I am today, the woman who allowed my voice to be heard, the teacher who taught me right from wrong, the teacher who did so much than just read a book in the classroom. She allowed me and seven others to debate in Florida out of her pocket. Mr. Gramonpre, who brought me and 11 other students to Costa Rica, the best week away from home. I was able to bond with others. I was able to see the effects of deforestation firsthand. And again, it was because of the McCormick. Ms. Gittens, who helped me so much, who, who built my confidence in the seventh grade, who helped me, the student who hated math so much until I got to her class. Ms. Gittens, who helped me develop relationships even outside of the school. The seventh grade teams was and still is helping me become the ninth grade, the ninth grade students that I am today, along with the eighth grade team. I don't even have enough time to talk about the eighth grade, but you can guess it's just as important to me. This school is special to me because it has brought me so many opportunity, opportunities. Whether it was from allowing me to go to, with my classmates to New York after graduation, Costa Rica, and Florida with my debate team, or whether I knew that I was emotionally and academically, academically supported. My question is, if Boston Arts Academy can go to, into community, community health and science high school and keep their community, community renovation, why can't the McCormick staff and students go to another school together until renovation is over? Why is it that we have to split up a community when we, we know that we don't have to do that? If we're trying so hard to compete with charter schools and save money, it would be a terrible waste if we have the future mother and fathers in this room right now being told that BPS is going to abandon them. Why would they ever want to send their own kids to BPS? This isn't how you beat the charter schools. This is how you beat your own students. Thank you.
My name is Arsal Mello. I go to school at Boston College High School on JFK and I am a, I am a ninth grader there and I am former student in eighth grade from McCormick. I oppose this, this whole project you guys have going on because it's, it's not gonna work at all. I just tell you this right now. Coming from a poor community and going into a rich school, I taught me that it's not all about the money and you guys make it, you guys make it clear it's all about the money. I have learned, I have learned with the resources from Nima Vasia, civics teacher, Chris Gramonpre, all my eighth grade teachers in general have taught me what it's like to be a man, what it's like to grow up in a poor community and make it out the hood, because that's the number one job you have to do here. These schools are supposed to be built to make, these schools are supposed to be built to make us be one of you guys one day, leaders. But our leaders right now are making dumb, dumb decisions. We got Donald Trump in office and that's like the worst thing ever happened to America. We got, you guys are contemplating about this whole idea and you should just focus on giving us money right now to Boston Public, making us, fund us because all these budget cuts are just killing us right now, killing the teachers, killing the students, giving our education in general. Today, we should just realize that life is not all about the money, man. Life is all about the hard work, the people who make your life, the, the teachers, the students who are by your side. 2015 today has taught me that going to be a man in America is gonna be hard and Boston is gonna be harder, but we can do this, man. BPS can just be funded and one day we all be happy.
Our next speaker is Elizabeth Reynolds Lupo. She'll be followed by Deja Foster and Mashia Brooks.
Hi, everyone. My name's Elizabeth and I'm a teacher at the Russell Elementary School. I've been at the Russell since 2011 after the closing of my first school, the Five Field Elementary. I know firsthand the impact a closing of a school has on children. I lived it with my students. After arriving at the Russell, I worked hard with my team, Advesters, and BC High College to build our school up to a Level One school. And we did it as a team. One of the things we knew that was very clear from the beginning was transitions was difficult for our children. So we worked really hard to build that into our plan. Our kids aren't just Russell kids from the day they walk in, they're Russell kids for life. While it's clear that renovations are necessary, whatever moves the school board chooses to make temporarily for these renovations, it's critical to keep our student population and staff together. It's critical to remember and acknowledge that the people in the school community that define the school and the education, not its building. We have worked hard to build a strong community tie and reinvent the schools to support the unique needs of the populations we serve. The Russell and the McCormick have worked overtime to build a strong partnership to ensure that the transition is cohesive and that our students have the same goal from the day they walk into kindergarten to the day they leave the McCormick. Our goal was to decrease the anxiety around transitions by having a clear path and open communication between the two schools to ensure that students continue to have that success and that we weren't losing our children to the charter schools that are around us. It is imperative that students and families have consistency. Keeping our community together is of the utmost importance for the success of the children we serve. Giving our students priority seating in an underperforming school is not the track we want them on and is not what we have worked for. We love knowing that when the students leave the Russell, they are headed to a school that is equipped with a team that is ready to serve them. They know exactly what our students have faced, what educational background they come from, what skills and services we have provided, and they're ready and able to provide similar and even better accommodations for the needs of middle school students that we aren't prepared to do at the Russell because we're not a middle school. We have seen firsthand the progress our children continue to make as they go to the McCormick. You saw two of my former graduates who spoke before me and I think that they are testament to what the Russell and the McCormick have done as a partnership. Please keep our path and our community intact as we make our repairs to the schools that are so needed. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Deja Foster. She'll be followed by
Good evening. Hello. Okay. My name is Deja Foster and I'm speaking on the behalf of my students and school community. I am a recent hire at West Roxbury Academy. I am devastated, I am devastated by what this decision means and does to my students. For seniors, what will the messaging be about their school closing? How will this affect their college process, college acceptances? What will they come back to for support if they decide to go to college a year or two later? For juniors, how will they have an equitable experience senior year? They have built strong, they have built a strong community here that knows them personally as well as academically. How will you guarantee fair support? How will you account for the students who have worked tirelessly to build profiles and GPAs that will now be affected by such an abrupt change? Students who have worked to be captains and presidents are now thrown into completely unfair territory. How will they be accounted for? Who will give their recommendations and solid guidance? What is the messaging, most importantly though, what is the messaging that this move is giving to the lower grades? It feels like you are referencing, referencing us solely as a building and, and we are far more than a building. We are a community. We are a spirit, a heart, and you are tearing this to pieces and spreading us across the district. Students don't feel heard, don't feel respected or thought of. And how do I, as a teacher, convince and assure them otherwise when answers are unclear and the reasoning you solely give points back to the building? We are not a building. We are a community. And based on the promises that this district has made to our students, you owe them a new space. Not a maybe, not a consideration, but a guarantee. They are valuable and they deserve such. They are more than numbers and we owe them far more consideration than what we are giving them. Please do not continue the current messaging that the district doesn't care about these students and their community. Save their community. We asked you to establish, you asked us to establish this community, now help us preserve it at all costs.
Our next speaker, our next speaker is Mashia Brooks, followed by Yana Manisha.
Hi, my name is Mashia Brooks and I am a senior at Urban Science Academy. I have struggled with mental health in my past and struggling with mental health and academics at the same time can often make you feel like you're drowning and you're lonely. But after just one month of attending Urban Science Academy, I have felt like I've been a part of a family and a support system. I personally feel the way that you guys have been dealing with this situation is extremely unprofessional. You've known of this problem for many years and it's been neglected instead of investing time and money. Many kids are going to be pushed into schools and unsafe communities which could potentially cause an uproar of violence. At the end of the day, I really don't think it's about the school being unsafe. At the end of the day, it comes down to two real things, which is segregation and gentrification. It seems to me like what this is doing is tearing down our home and building something with opportunities that a lot of us won't be able to take part of. Boston is one of the most segregated cities and has been undergoing gentrification for years and now they're pushing it into our schools. Whether it was intentional or not, minorities are being neglected in the school system and aren't being shown the same respect and professionalism as predominantly white and upper-class schools. Now, I don't know, I don't know any of you guys' past, but I assure at least one of you sitting here today had to fight to get the spot that you are in. And I just want you guys to give us the same opportunity and I don't feel like we're getting that. This situation could have been handled with more organization and portage shore, with more thought put into it. And we don't realize like we say it, but we don't realize, everyone, every student sitting here today, whatever school they're from, they're here, they're going to be the future leaders of not only Boston, but America.
20 seconds.
And our education is just as important as everyone else's. And this isn't the last time you're gonna hear us speak. I don't know what decision you guys are gonna make, but we're not only here to save our school, but we're here to save our community and our family. Thank you very much. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Brooks.
Hi, everyone. My name is Yana Minchenko. I teach at Urban Science. So, today, we spent time sitting in the restorative justice circles, B Block, C Block, E Block, F Block, and we talked about justice. We talked about what drove us into the circle and looked at some evidence why our school is closing. We couldn't find any. Instead, we found a lot of evidence why the school has to continue. So, I took some notes to remember the details because they're hard facts. Last year, MCAS grew 90% from the previous year and has improved 90% in students improvement. Science, 75.1%, which is higher than a district. We also talked about progression in math, MCAS. We have partnerships that make our collective list thrive. We have partnership with Youth Build, with Pathways, with Advestors, with Institute of Contemporary Art, with Avid, with Harvard University, with One Goal, and many more that I probably don't remember. So, we again sat back and thought about how come the building is more valuable than the partnerships and the progress that our students have been making? We were surprised and could not find answers. On behalf of my student who could not sign up, Annika Raymond, I also would like to speak on the fact that sounds like unjust loyalty, the loyalty that has to be given with a focus on our children, which is poster up here projects on all the audience. Boston Public Schools, focus on children. Now, we would love to have a conversations and see how we can preserve and restore the student body and the community that we've working so hard. We have really low retention. The turnaround of the teachers, we continue to work in the same schools for many years. I've been in the same school for nine years. My partner's been there in the school for 20 years. It speaks a lot on the progress of the students. We have a lot of students come and speak on this behalf that also, I hope, there's evidence that we should preserve and save our community of learning. So, I thank you on giving us this opportunity.
Thank you, Ms. Minchenko.
Our next speaker is Jeriel Francis, followed by Astrid Perez and Sarah Lawton.
My name is Jeriel Francis and I'm a sixth grader at the McCormick Middle School. And I just want to talk about how, when I came from the Russell, when I came to the McCormick, all the teachers knew me, most of the teachers knew me, and they knew what my learning status was and how I was already doing before then. So, they knew what to teach me and how to teach me versus just like, oh, I think he knows this, I'm going to just teach him this. They knew what they had to teach me. So, they taught me and I know more in the first five weeks of school than I would know at another school. So, basically, if you shut down the McCormick, then you would be stripping me and all of the sixth, seventh, and eighth graders at the McCormick of their education because the McCormick is a very educated school, I guess, because a lot of teachers know the kids and we've created a bond within the first month of school. And I feel like all the teachers will be stripped away from their jobs as well because the teachers that are at the McCormick don't do it for the money, but they do it because they like what they're doing and they like teaching kids new things every single day. And every day, there's something new to learn. We might have a review, but there's always something new.
Twenty seconds.
Hmm?
Twenty seconds.
And if you strip away of the McCormick, then I feel like there'll be less learning to do.
Our next speaker is Astrid Perez, followed by Sarah Lawton and Ariana Gordon. Astrid Perez? Oh, okay, thank you. Sarah Lawton? Is Ms. Lawton here? Ariana Gordon?
Good evening. My name is Ariana Gordon and I'm a senior at West Roxbury Academy. I came all the way from Brockton and I entered West Roxbury as a junior and this is currently my second year here. When I left Brockton, I left so many bad memories behind. I was a little broken and I kind of needed to be fixed. When I came to this school, it was almost like new beginnings. Like, I made friends immediately. I joined the sports team and they were actually my first friends. I felt really welcome and I felt like this is the most support I've had from both my peers and the teachers and any other schools that I've been to. Like, I feel like they actually really care about me and my success. So, I just wanted to come across a couple topics that I felt like it needed to be spoken about. So, one thing is sports. I actually had a game today and we won and I just felt like... I felt like that feeling of accomplishment, that feeling that me and my team have made, we won together, we lose together, and I feel like it's one of those everlasting moments that makes me feel like, why is that being torn down? Like, I feel like the bond that I've created with my girls is just unbreakable and I don't want to lose that. And I also don't want to, even though I'm a senior, I don't want to leave that behind for them. For the juniors, I feel like you can't be that quick to make the decision to close a school, knowing that our juniors are so close to their final year of the school, they know them forever. If the class splits, they'll be all sorts of unstable. This means that they're starting a new year at an unfamiliar place with no teacher bonds, no friends to talk to or to lean on, and most importantly, they aren't cared for when it comes to completing their FAFSA, their Common App, their college essays, recommendations, basically everything that their past teachers were preparing them for. And seniors, we can never look back on our past memories. We can never have a senior alumni. We will be known as the last class of Westin. Why does it have to end with us? I can't imagine how it would feel trying to visit my past school and seeing a ground of ruins. I can't imagine how my peers would feel when they have to sit alone at lunch in class in their new school or reminiscing about the fun times they had with their friends at Westin. I don't really think you guys expected how many students, how many parents, how many teachers from West Roxbury Academy and Urban Science Academy would come here today. Nobody really wanted us to come to this meeting, but we're here because we demand you hear our voice. We're the voice of the school and we will have a say. Change isn't just up to the adults. We are adults in the making, trying to step up for what we believe in. We are your future leaders and at some point, we want you guys to know that we are a determined school to support what we believe in.
Thank you, Ms. Gordon. Our next speaker is Haley Vasquez, followed by Pamela Doily and Jacqueline Guerra. Is Haley with us? Pamela Doily? Jacqueline Guerra? Tamika Taylor? Simone James?
Public comment closed at 6:30. No, I'm sorry, ma'am. Thank you. David Joseph?
I'm sorry, is this young lady coming to speak? You're one of the names? Thank you.
Simone, welcome.
Hi, good evening.
Good evening.
I'm a student, I mean, I'm a parent of a student on the autism spectrum, Jamone Gilchrist. My concerns are, structure is important to kids with autism. If you was to take my son out of the school, he would have to start over and, you know, learn... Oh, God, I don't believe it. He would have to start all over again, loving the teachers or trying to get to know the teachers, his current peers. Infrastructure for these kids is very important. I feel like you guys hit me with Hurricane Michael and it's not fair. This is my son. This is very important to me that he has structure. He's a freshman in high school and I demand answers from you. You know, like, it's not fair to all these people here that you would displace these students and he's in a school that he loves. He talks about urban science every day, okay? And please, don't do it to these special needs kids as well as the other students in West Roxbury. It's important to the parents and the teachers that our kids are in a safe environment that is good for them and they're happy. Thank you.
Next, we'll hear from Emily Wolf, followed by Antoinetta Bolome and Amelia Andrews.
My name is Emily Wolf. I am a music teacher at the McCormick. I have some questions about BPS bill guaranteeing equitable access to an arts and music education during the transition years. McCormick is able to offer music, art, and woodworking to our students through partnerships with the Elliott School as well as high-quality instruction from... Excuse me. High-quality instruction from certified art and music educators that not only take into account their students, but also integrate technology in an engaging way. How is the district working towards ensuring that these students at the receiving school will receive an equitable access to the arts and music education opportunities? If the district is unable to ensure these opportunities, then how can they claim that Build BPS process is about getting our students access to high-quality 7th through 12th education?
Thank you, Ms. Wolf. Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Antoinetta Bolome. I'm an ESL teacher at the Spanish life program at the McCormick Middle School. Our student population at the McCormick represents students from all over the globe. The majority of our students are students of color. Less than 5% of our student population is Caucasian and more than three-quarters of our student population is on free or reduced lunch. One-third of the students are English language learners who recently immigrated to the United States. They have been here for one or two years. Of our students, 50% of the students in the school identify themselves as Latino and speak Spanish at home. We also have a significant number of students who are students with disability. In addition to all that, our students come from neighborhoods like Dorchester, Roxbury, and Maripan, which are experiencing outstanding high rates of violence and trauma on regular basis. In fact, in the last week and a half, there have been eight homicides in those neighborhoods. So, this is my concern, this is our concern and the question that we have. Why did Build BPS pick the McCormick to enact a project in the experimental phase with the most vulnerable students in the city? This is true for students at the McCormick, but it's also true for students whose education would be disrupted by having 12- and 13-year-old students entering their building and needing for the school to accommodate for the needs of these students in a different age. Thank you. Please keep our community intact.
Our next speaker is Amelia Andrews, followed by Alyssa Montero.
Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Amelia Andrews and I am currently a ninth grader at the English High School. I attended the McCormick Middle School from 2015 to 2018 and I am here to talk about how the McCormick has had a positive impact on my education. I hope I can change your decision by telling you my story. At first, I did not always do well in school. I struggled to get my work done, to stay awake during my classes and sometimes even receive Cs or Ds on my report card. This changed when I entered eighth grade. All of my teachers had high expectations for me and pushed me in all of my classes. We were like a family, well, we still are a family, and I didn't only depend on the teachers, but I could also get help from my peers. I learned how to stand on my own. It was challenging at first, but now I feel more prepared than a lot of other students in high school. Because of my education at the McCormick, I was also able to apply and get into Art Within Bound, a college prep program at MassArt. Without the support of my teachers at the McCormick, I would not be where I am today. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Andrews.
After Ms. Montero, we'll hear from Al Vega and Dolores Wood.
Good evening. My name is Alyssa Montero and I'm a graduate of McCormick Middle School. When I was attending the McCormick, I felt a tremendous amount of support from the community, one that I never felt before. It broke my heart last night when I heard that there was a proposal to potentially close down the McCormick, a school in perfectly good condition with a perfectly good team. The McCormick is where my family's story begins, from my oldest sister and cousins before me to my younger nephew and cousins after me, all in which are successful individuals today. Most significantly, it is where I was motivated by my peers and teachers to break out of my shell and become the outgoing overachiever that I am today. I am proud to say that the McCormick has prepared me to be graduating at the top of my senior class in 2019 and to continue to achieve through college and my future career. Although more modern buildings and more funding is great, that is not all that makes a school. Did you see the representation of former members of McCormick in this room alone? Our voices must be heard. The beautiful community of the McCormick has been engraved in every teacher, every student, every family, and anyone who has ever partnered with the McCormick. So, what about all the hard work put in by the amazing united team at the McCormick? The teachers who break their backs for the success of the students? And what about the students with so much potential that are currently enrolled? Will you just throw them in a lower achieving school and destroy McCormick's legacy? You are ripping a family apart and depriving the students of their great opportunities offered through McCormick. Please keep the McCormick together and stop hindering students from the consistency of the education and support they deserve. If you want to make it public that your Boston Public Schools sign says, "Focus on the children," then actually focus on them.
Next, we'll hear from Al Vega and Dolores Wood, followed by Brianna Alexander.
Thank you, good evening. My name is Al Vega. I'm the Director of Policy and Programs at Mascosh, the Massachusetts Coalition for Occupational Safety and Health. So, as we began to hear about what Build BPS may mean for schools like the McCormick and those located in the West Roxbury High School complex, we had really hoped that we would finally be able to see a comprehensive facilities master plan, which is something we had been advocating for over 15 years, where we could use all of this data and the stories of what these schools were looking like as well as the potential health impacts we felt were being exacerbated by either ignoring concerns or not putting enough funding behind the repairs and general maintenance needed to remedy the problems in a timely manner. So, it is disheartening tonight to hear and know that a school where some of our former youth peer leaders just graduated from this past June will not be able to continue operating and provide a great school community for close to 800 young people mainly because of how extensive the repairs needed are at this point, even if they were raised numerous times over numerous years. We feel that many schools may now fall under this designation even if they have strong communities of students, staff, parents, and teachers who love their school and had hoped this plan would help strengthen those schools' efforts and not be used to justify closing them down. We are unsure where this plan will take us in the long run and have heard mixed feedback on the involvement or exclusion of certain departments within BPS not being considered as part of the final recommendations or plan implementation. We are here because for over 20 years, we have advocated for the improvement of air quality and promotion of safe environmental health conditions for both students and teachers to ensure that all teaching and learning in our schools is occurring in safe and healthy buildings. We do this work through direct trainings with teachers, parents, students, and other school support staff such as nurses and custodians as well as advocating here and at city as well as advocating here and at City Hall for additional funding for adequate maintenance and operations funds to implement strategies and finding solutions. We are part of the Citywide Healthy Schools Environment Subcommittee, formerly the Healthy Schools Task Force, where we strive to promote green and healthy policies and practices as well as assess and try to fix the numerous repairs identified through the city mandated audits or through the work of the Health and Wellness Department's Healthy Schools Environment Framework, which also allows us to work with champions at dozens of schools to look at school building conditions more closely and coordinate solutions with their wellness councils. So we believe in order to provide complete transparency, we should hold off on any recommendations for school closures until a final plan is approved and shared publicly. We also think a permanent superintendent should be first appointed to implement this and that we avoid a piecemeal approach that we believe will occur under an interim superintendent who has just confirmed that she will not be here to see this plan through completion. We need to find additional funding so that can be added to the budget to deal with the issues of understaffing maintenance and the endless list of repairs which, year after year, go unnoticed and continue to grow while many schools try to operate in less-than-ideal conditions and which we now fear will be used to target schools for closure. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Vega. Our next speaker is Dolores Wood, and she'll be followed by Brianna Alexander and Emmett Fulgert.
Welcome back, Ms. Wood.
Thank you. So, yeah, we've been through this before. All right. Just two-point-five years ago, our very own Build BPS classified West Roxbury's overall building condition as good. We were given a B in an A-to-F list of excellent, good, fair, poor, deficient. Now our building is suddenly a menace to the youth? This hasty process to shut down the school has all the earmarks of another fake emergency and an unend-run around the deliberative decision-making that process that Build P-, Build PPS represents. Suddenly, West Roxbury doesn't deserve a decent conversation about the long term. We wonder, is the rush a cover for reinstating segregation? Will our school close in June and magically reopen seven years later as a neighborhood school, reflecting the decidedly less diverse population of West Roxbury alone? Who will be around to object at the time, since the diverse students of the inner city will have been all dispersed? The monetary figures don't seem to add up either. We were told yesterday that it would take eleven million to replace the will, uh, the windows and the roof of the building to make it safe enough to proceed. We learned that those expenses, that the state will help with those expenses. Yet the preferred solution is to knock down the building and build a new one for a hundred million over the next seven years? Close it for seven years? Exactly what will we get for this huge expenditure? And if our diverse students are sent back to Roxbury, Dorchester, and Matapan, where is their hundred-million state-of-the-art high school? And its adjacent eighteen-point-five-million-dollar sports complex? Also, what happens to our soph-, well, we talked about that. Skipping ahead, we're, I'm constantly seeing that we are a low-performing school, but that doesn't, the accountability formula is the thing that is, is, has, that's been a false narrative for a long time. Our, our, we had twenty-one percent ESL students take the MCAS last year. And in ELA, a hundred percent, almost a hundred percent of them passed. One student failed by one question. And the, the, the record, the, the, the rate of passage in the state is ninety percent, ninety-two percent failure. For ESL ones, we had two, two, two ESL ones pass. It is seventy-five percent failure for ESL two, all of our ESL two passed. And for ESL three, it's fifty-three percent, almost all, except for the one that got a two-eighteen. So we are not a failing school, we are an exemplary school.
Ms. Wood?
We are asking the school committee to give our school more time in our own building, and, and we want another opinion about this, because how, how are they still transferring students in there if it's a failing building? And at a minimum, to keep our school and community intact somewhere else. We don't believe the district denials that our school system cannot be transferred en masse to an empty portion of Excel or Burke where Dearborn just left space. We deserve the same respect in this building process as the rest of the schools in the BPS district and not to be rushed out of our school in June.
Thank you, Ms. Wood. Our next speaker is Brianna Alexander, followed by Emmett Fulgert and Victor Batista.
Hello. My name is Brianna Alexander. I would like to thank everybody for coming today and hopefully we're not wasting our time. I am here to represent McCormick this evening. First off, I want to start with how thankful I am for the amount of support I received from the entire Panther community. I entered the McCormick in the middle of my seventh-grade year, and I honestly couldn't be more thankful for having the opportunity. I was super nervous with the new routine, but all the teachers and students welcomed me like crazy. Also allowed me to meet the group, to meet a group of a very, wait, woo. Also allowed me to meet a group of very, very important people in my life outside of McCormick. By the second week, it felt completely right, and I never wished I had, I never wished I made a different choice. I came from East Boston to Dorchester every morning, and honestly, you might think it was a struggle, but I was so motivated every morning because I was going somewhere where I felt good, and there was nothing better than that. Let me bring up this recent school year, my last year at McCormick, eighth-grade year. The known role models. Best year, and I would say the best set of teachers, but all the teachers at McCormick were amazing. The eighth-grade team was so determined to see everyone succeed and showed that every five days a week. I was involved in the yearly Costa Rica trip, which was the best experience I've had in my life yet. I had the habit of giving up way too quickly, and I couldn't have grown on that part without the McCormick. The McCormick community doesn't only impact you in education, but in everything. The idea of separating this needed community destroys my hope for all these new students coming in and having the opportunity as I had. These kids deserve to keep being changed in the way that works best together at the McCormick. I'm an, I'm now a new admission freshman, couldn't be more confident. About it. The best part is that I still have my former teachers texting me how I'm doing in school, and that couldn't be more to me. I will forever be a Panther and hope that we are allowed to unleash others into the world. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Alexander.
Our next speaker is Emmett Fulgert, followed by Victor Batista and Chanelle John.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak to the committee. My name's Emmett Fulgert, and I'm the Executive Director of the Dorchester Youth Collaborative. I've been around quite a while. I've had opportunities to work with, with BPS schools for over three decades. And those, those partnerships fell into, have fallen into three categories, good and better and excellent. McCormick is excellent at working with community agencies. We have a program where, together, we identify young people who, through no fault of their own, most of them anyway, live in the highest violent crime neighborhoods in the city, the seven percent of the area where eighty percent of the gunshot violence occurs. And our, our program's very simple. Our staff talks to their staff, the teachers, administrators, every single day. Okay? And we round them up at the end of the day, after they've gone to their after-school programs, after they've gone through their school days. And we help to make sure they get their homework done, that we focus on the day, they get some food, and deal with any problems that might come up. But, you know, more importantly is to capture the successes that occurred during the day. And what we do is, we don't ask kids if they're going to summer camp, for example. It's not which summer camp you're going to. We don't ask if you're going to have an extracurricular activity. No, which one are you going to have? We overschedule these kids, if anything, to make sure that we are helping them, through opportunities, increase their hopes and decrease their fears. And it works. Fabulous program, and I can't say enough about the staff, the teachers, and the administrators, and the young people here today from the McCormick.
Thank you, Ms. Fulgert.
Our next speaker is Victor Batista, followed by Chanelle John and Haven Jones.
Good evening.
Good evening. My name's Victor, my name's Victor Batista Lopez, and I'm a graduate student from the McCormick Middle School. And I want to start with, like, why are you, like, thinking that, like, the building is not in bad shape? Because when I was in there for my three years in that school, it was totally fine. There was no issues, and like, everything is great there. And like, by closing the building, you're just like making the teacher, like, maybe lose their jobs or anything? Like, I saw my eighth-grade teacher, Ms. Abashia, stay there, like, until seven PM, trying to like, fi-, like, to prepare her, her lesson for the next day. And then Ms. Masha, who like, out of her own, like, my math teacher, out of her own pocket, she bought twenty-four graphing calculators that cost each one of them a hundred dollars out of her pocket. And then Ms. Doily, she's like a, a good teacher that motivates you to, like, stay in school and like, never be late to school, because she was like a good role model for a lot of the students in there, because she loved, like, she would, like, really motivate the students to be in school. Because she would, she, like, if she didn't give up, she would, she would, like, speak to them, like, to stop, to not be giving up at school. And then by the other side, I have my little brother, who's now a seventh grader, and he's like already made bone with the teachers that he cannot make at all the schools. So it's like so difficult for him to, like, just get out of DMC to another school and then try to make friends and try to meet the new teachers and get used to, to, like, what he's gonna learn in there, because he's already been there, like, for a year, so it really don't, it's not necessary to close the building, because it's like really in good sense. And like, everybody that I went to school since sixth grade, we all call us DMC heads, because it's like our name, because we've been there, like, since sixth grade. And not, it cannot take, like, if you close the building, you're like basically taking that away from us if you're, like, trying to make something different with the scho-, with the school.
Thank you, Ms. Batista.
Our next speaker is Chanelle John, followed by Haven Jones and Camilla Spizito.
Good evening. My name is Chanelle John, and I work for the Trinity at McCormick program. We are a clinical counseling program that is at the McCormick Middle School, where we've been for five years. And I have to say, I was extremely disappointed and distressed when I heard the news about the decisions that you're trying to make this evening. And I want to highlight that this is an equity issue. This is an issue that will, is apparently you're choosing to make it affect the most vulnerable students in the district. The McCormick serves students who are new to the country. As somebody spoke to, we have a third of our students who are immigrants, who are from Spanish-speaking countries. And yet you want them to move to Excel where they don't even have a Spanish-speaking ESL program. If we want our students to have higher-quality seats, it is inequitable for us to send them away to a struggling school and then not give them the opportunity to come back to the school where they already were. And it's really critical to think about the message that that sends to our students and to their families, that we're disposable, that their education doesn't matter, that the disruption that is going to affect them for the rest of their lives is just not an issue to, to the people in, on this board. And I'm deeply concerned about how this is aligning with the gentrification and the segregation in our city. Black and brown students are already facing innumerable odds. And we have dedicated educators who have been in the district, in our building, excuse me, for over ten years. We have fifth-generation students, we've taught five generations from one family. That is not something that you see at other schools in the district. We also have innovative programs that don't exist in other schools. We have an incredible SLIF program. We have an incredible TLC program. We've had, and we've also been innovating and doing programming that the district is now catching up to. We've had restorative programming, circles happening in the McCormick for over ten years. My organization has tried to work with the McCormick to make us a more trauma-inclusive and racially equitable school for five years. And so by disregarding the progress that we've made and sending them to an underperforming school, it's really taking away opportunities from students who need them more than most. And I think it really does a disservice to the legacy of the McCormick and the dedicated educators who have been in this building, working in substandard conditions for decades to make a difference in the lives of our students. And I just want to end on the note that this will have far-reaching implications, not just for the students, but for our larger communities. I'm sure we're all aware of the issues in Chicago, the levels of violence that they're facing. And part of why that's the case is because the CPS, school system, has destabilized community schools, joined schools without thinking through the implications, and then created situations where there's violence, there's an increase in murders and crime. Our students are already living in communities where there are murders happening every single day. That is trauma. And to make them transition again is adding additional trauma to students who will barely recover from the trauma just of being black and brown students and immigrants in our country. And I just want to highlight that this is not being piloted at a white school in a wealthy community with students who aren't vulnerable. You're piloting this in a place where students are already facing insurmountable odds. And I think it's unconscionable for us to place another odd, another, another challenge in front of them when there are dedicated educators who've been working to serve them. And lastly, who can serve our students better than us? We have been here, serving our students diligently for decades. Why separate the community that has been a family for years? So lastly, keep our students together, keep our families together, and put the students first. Actually focus on children versus other priorities in the district and the city. Thank you.
Um, hello. My name is Haven Jones. I am a clinical social worker with the Trinity at McCormick program, which is part of the Trinity-Boston Foundation. I am a recent hire. I've been at the McCormick for all of six weeks. And I have not been in, I've been in a lot of schools and a lot of roles in the past four years. I have not seen a team that is as cohesive and as committed to helping their students as I have seen at the McCormick in the past month and a half. It's unbelievable how much these teachers care, not just about teaching their students the curriculum, but teaching them the things they actually need to succeed in life. Like, you heard the students who are current McCormick students, who are alumni, they know things that I did not learn in my wealthy, white suburban school district, all through K through twelve. They know how to come up here and present their views in a way that is unheard of in all of these other districts that have the money to train their students to do these things. And these teachers are doing it without these resources. So I think it's important and it's imperative that the teaching team gets to stay together, because I already have seen that they are a powerful unit that works with each other to support the students. On top of that, I have a number of questions, which I may not have time to ask, because I'm sure I'm gonna run out. But I, first of all, am confused about why you guys opened for public comment before sharing the plan, knowing full well that by the time comments are done, everyone will be gone and no one will actually see what the plan is. Second, why are we only hearing Phase Two of this plan? What, how many phases are there? When will we hear Phase Three, Phase Four, Phase Five, Phase Six? How do we know that the schools our students are getting switched to in Phase Two are not going to be the next schools on the chopping block in stage, in Phase Three? Finally, the McCormick was built in nineteen sixty-seven. This is post-World War II, which ended in nineteen forty-four. The Excel High School was built in nineteen oh-one. Excel is significantly older, is in a lower, um, assessment category than the McCormick. Yet we are going to say the best way to serve these students is to take them out of a more modern school, put them in a school that is already struggling academically, which is of no fault to the, to the Excel teachers, but it's adding more to their plate, and then expect that our seventh and eighth graders who end up in that building are not going to be told three years from now, hey, guess what? Your building's really old, we have to do something to fix it, let's send you to Brighton High. Like, it's, it's unacceptable, and there's a lot of questions that I feel like are not being answered. I also wish Marty Walsh were at these conversations, because it is his plan. You guys, as the, as a school council, are obviously a part of it, but where is Marty Walsh? If he has this plan, he needs to show up and explain what's going on, because it's not fair to the interim superintendent. It's not fair to those of you who are on the council who want to hear what's going on, and it's not fair to our students, our families, and our community. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Jones.
Our next speaker is Camilla Spizito, followed by Alana Perez and Christine Langhoff. Is Ms. Spizito with us? Alana Perez?
Good evening, Ms. Perez.
Hello. My name is Alana Perez, and I was a former student at the McCormick. And last night, when I got told these news, I personally didn't know how to react. I spent about three hours trying to figure out what I was gonna say when I sat here in front of all of you. Simply, all these words cannot fit in the paper. I am so angry at everything that has been happening. That school meant so much than just a school, much more than a community. That was my home, that even when I left, I knew that I could come back. All my teachers taught me that the sky's the limit. The sky is not the limit, and it will never be. And that's exactly why I'm here, because the sky is not the limit. And I know that we can go so much farther than that with the support of the teachers that I have. And I sometimes wonder what will happen to my teachers? Where will I go back to? Where will my home go? And to end this with a quote, "Not everything that is faced can be changed, but nothing can be changed until it is faced." And I'm here to face this problem.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Christine Langhoff, followed by Nima Avashia.
Hi, I'm Christine Langhoff, BPS graduate, BPS parent of three graduates, BPS retired teacher after thirty-six years at Middleland High School. First of all, I want to shout out the amazing students who came here this evening with scarcely any notice. The manner in which they presented themselves demonstrates their deep commitment to their education, as well as the excellent instruction and emotional support that they've received from their dedicated teachers. There's one among many deeply troubling facets of all of these plans and that for me is the intent to set up a competition among high schools to build on newly renovated buildings because it sets up winners and losers. Equitable education is a right of all of the children in our city. And it must not be parceled out to just some winners. This paradigm is contrary to democratic principles and it has its origins in the philanthro- phil- philanthropic world from which Ms. Peril heals. Ed Vestas is known primarily for three initiatives, the Arts Expansion Initiative, zeroing in on math, and the Schools on the Move Prize, which awards small dollar funds to schools which compete for those prizes. The awards do not amount to much for the foundations, but for the schools, they're essential. In this way, the foundation shapes the policy and decides how schools will direct their energies. Our school systems cannot be run in that manner. What do the losers do? Estimada señora doctora Obrarte, si usted no alcanza la voz en contra de este plan por los estudiantes latinos, haitianos, afroamericanos, africanos, vietnametes, los indocumentados, los sin hogar, los de necesidades especiales, ¿quién lo va a hacer?
Twenty seconds.
Nadie. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, everyone. My name is Nima Avashia. I'm an eighth grade civics teacher at the McCormick Middle School, where I've been teaching for the last fifteen years. And apparently, I'm here today to give a history lesson. Because in two thousand nine, the Dever Elementary School was put into turnaround. And as part of that turnaround plan, the district decided that it would be merged with the McCormick Middle School into a K to eight. They were together for about four years and the task of a merger and a turnaround was incredibly difficult. Our principal at the time, Mike Saban, basically crawled out the door at the end because it was so hard to do. And the Dever, the following year, was put into level five status. So I'm extremely confused, if we know that history, why a plan would be put on the table that would involve merging our same middle school, which has already done that once, with another turnaround school? Why would we repeat history that we know didn't work the first time? Is that the best thinking that a build BPS team that's been working for four years can come up with? Because I kind of shot that down in thirty seconds. My second concern is about the fact that the McCormick has been aware of the fact that a grade change is coming for quite a while. That's not, people have been transparent about that. And what we've been saying all along is that we want to be part of that process. For the last three years, we have been meeting as a school community with district officials, with folks in the superintendent's office, with people who are instructional superintendents, with people in the Office of Strategy, with outside partners to talk about what would it mean for the McCormick to be a seven to twelve? Maybe we'd be able to grow into a seven to twelve. Obviously, that'd be ideal. But if not, what would it look like to merge with an existing high school? To find someone who shared our values, we know we have space. We're open to that conversation. So why would we end up in a situation where yesterday, out of nowhere, we're told our students are being sent to Excel, there is no plan for our staff, and we're not part of any conversation, even though for three years, nobody told us no? I feel like there are a lot of questions that need to be answered and I look forward to you answering them. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Melissa Prieto, followed by Ethna Riley and Sarah Cook. Is Melissa Prieto here? Nope. Ethna Riley? Sarah Cook?
Good evening, Ms. Cook.
Hello. I just had a few words to say about things. I go to Urban Science Academy and I'm a freshman there. Around our school, we have estimated around seven hundred kids. I heard the news this morning that you guys are planning to shut our school down. I don't know about other people, but I tend to put others' needs above my own needs. What about all the hard work these seven hundred kids have put into building bonds with their teachers? What about friendship? What about going to a community where you feel safe and you feel like people understand you? I really don't understand the system. Like this is just wrong. Me myself, I just moved to this school and I feel like I, I already built like really strong like bonds with these people. It's not just friendship, it's family. It's not just family, it's a chain of ever-growing love that just can't be broken. When I stepped foot inside my school, I felt welcomed. I felt as if I had known these people for years. I'm putting the seniors and graduates first because I personally, I don't know what it would feel like if you just like, like me going to college, I feel like that's gonna be a hard transition. But what about all these kids that you guys are kicking out, the eleventh graders? Like how, how do you think they're feeling right now? Like they're probably really stressed out right now. And just look around and really think about how many people this decis- this decision is really gonna affect. We demand a change in decision because we will not stop fighting for our school. I will not stop fighting for my school. It's not the teachers, it's the system that's bringing us down. And it's not the money, it's the fact that you guys are doing things that is in your best interest and things that will only help you guys rise up and succeed. We deserve equality, but this is not it. We say in the pledge that justice is for all, but this is not just. If I'm really, if you really care about us, I'm not asking, I'm begging. Don't shut Westy down, please. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Cook.
Our next speaker is Louise Packard.
Good evening. I'm Louise Burnham Packard. I'm the executive director of the Trinity Boston Foundation. For the last five years, Trinity has embedded clinical staff, you've met two of them, at the McCormick School. We invest over five hundred thousand dollars a year in these programs. We have a clinical program for the most vulnerable students in a school of vulnerable students. We are supporting the school as it works to create a restorative justice culture. We're helping to create trauma-inclusive classrooms. And finally, we're coordinating with city nonprofits to give students access to basic needs and services. Through the dedication of an amazing teacher, a core of teachers and staff and strong partnerships, the school is meeting the needs of its students. I'm not here about the money we invest in the McCormick. I'm here because the current plan, compounded by a thoughtless, on-the-fly rollout to the school, has created already an equity emergency. School communities like McCormick are sacred. The relationships among teachers and between teachers and generations of students are a precious asset. The BPS administration and school committee are stewards of these assets. Why is this an equity emergency? Because the students at McCormick already feel invisible and not valued. The decision to close rather than relocate the school confirms this view. The decision to send them to a turnaround school that doesn't have an existing seventh and eighth grade signals that they are expendable. McCormick teachers have been working with BPS for three years on a plan to create a seven through twelve school. Let's keep working on that plan and save this sacred school community. Thank you.
Ms. LaConde, that concludes our speakers for general public comment.
Well, thank you, Ms. Sullivan. And I want to, I want to take a moment just to thank all of the speakers tonight. We had fifty-eight speakers in total. And I know one of many of the students and teachers and parents who were here earlier tonight have now left due to the late hour. I just want to take a moment to say thank you again for coming out and sharing your views this evening. As we'll hear in a little bit in the report this evening, this is the beginning of the conversation. This is not the end. Nothing is a foregone conclusion. We'll have a number of conversations that will continue the discussion on each one of the schools that'll be affected in this plan. Having said that, I know we have a number of votes on the agenda tonight, as well as a number of reports. And it's close to nine o'clock already, so I want to take a quick five-minute recess and we'll reconvene at five minutes of nine PM and we'll continue with the consent calendar of the meeting tonight.